We're going to call the board meeting in order. It's October the 3rd, well into October. First thing is set adjust agenda. Anybody have anything to remove from the agenda?
It's pretty slim. I need to begin with, so.
I know, I know, that was good. I like it, thank you. Alright, so next, communication from the audience. Anyone here to bring anything that's not on the agenda? That we're not going to talk about today?
Yes.
Can you state your name, please?
Yes, shall I stand?
Yeah.
However, however you're comfortable.
Stand and move into the room and talk over by that microphone.
Alright, you guys.
Wow, that's a lot of energy.
Thank you.
My name is Macy Moller. Just came here to introduce myself. I'm the new director for ECTV. I'm excited to be back in Hardwick and bring some, bring back community television, so.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you, Macy.
Yes.
Yeah, we appreciate ECTV, especially for filming our select board meetings. It's really great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else have anything to communicate or? Okay. We're going to roll then. Next is to approve minutes. We have two sets. One was our last regular meeting, which was the 19th, September 19th, and had a special meeting on September 27th.
And especially, you got 15 minutes to get there, meaning?
That was the one.
Yeah.
Hurry up.
Sorry, you're not here yet?
There was an option to call.
Oh, okay, very.
Yeah.
I got your message.
Alright, so.
We got it done. I was worried you weren't going to have enough people after all this.
Right, yeah, no, we got it down. So, how about a motion to approve the?
Motion to approve both sets of minutes, please.
Second minute.
Oh, well, I wasn't at the second one.
That's alright, carry on. That's fine.
Yep.
Do you read the minutes?
I do.
Yeah.
Paragraph. Yeah, I read the stories.
So, any discussion on the minutes? I thought it was good, both of them, so thank you very much. All favor to approve both sets of minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye, great.
Vote, motion carries, thank you. Next, town manager report, given by Mr. Upson.
Okay, so, we're working on, we've been communicating back and forth with the bond bank over a project anticipation loan, which, for 1.7 million for the lift stations, for the mitigation for the lift stations.
So just for lift stations?
This is going to be a FEMA project, and the loan will be in anticipation of the FEMA reimbursement. What's, what's great about this, this is a state, leftover state ARPA funds that the state moved over to the bond bank to, to put out there for water investment projects. And what's great about this loan is FEMA does the 75%, 25% of, the 25% is the local match. So the state and the local usually split that 25%. With this program, the 25% is forgiven.
Wow.
So, we had an application and we've been meeting with the bond bank and we're just trying to finalize the details and also use our bond counsel to make sure that we're doing it right and that we can guarantee the payback with the FEMA, the obligated funds from FEMA. So, more on that, but we're having, we're starting, they just opened it up. We put in an application and so we're in those back and forth meetings right now.
So I have two questions.
Yep.
One is, if it's a bond in anticipation of FEMA reimbursement, it's going to be, we think, a small timeframe, do we need a bond vote?
Um, we.
Or do we not know yet?
We, we don't know yet. That's going to be dependent on the structure of the loan.
Okay.
But if it is in anticipation of FEMA and we have guaranteed that FEMA's going to reimburse, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't need to go to the voters for it.
And then the second is just about the projects, so lift stations.
Yep. It's tied into the entire wastewater.
Yeah.
But because they have a limited amount of money in the program.
Yep.
And they've identified product as a potential recipient of it, they want to do one, this, as a small project, so not lump it in into the funding for the wastewater.
And the lift stations were a huge pain in the, in the flood.
Well, they're both, well, they're both in the flood plain.
Right.
Floodway, and they were both flooded and they need.
Yeah.
We need to raise, raise up the infrastructure.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
We can't really move them.
I'm a little surprised it's 1.7 million just to raise, I mean, I'm assuming we're buying all new equipment when we're raising them, but still.
Some of them will be, some of the equipment will be different.
Yeah. Okay, alright. And is, is always an Elliott working on this?
Yes. Yep.
Alright, sounds great.
Yep. So, A and E, next meeting, originally it will present their draft report that they will, after they present the draft report to the public, to the select board, they'll, they'll mark it up as a 90% complete report. And then FEMA will take, the state consultants will take the plan up to FEMA, to the leadership, and then they will provide us with what they're going to give us for funding for the new wastewater plant rebuild.
Oh, so this is, whoa, really?
Yeah.
Pays two.
Yep, this is, well, we're, we're getting to the point where we're going to receive basically an offer from FEMA as to what they will, what they're going to give us for the wastewater plant.
So, but you're saying the next meeting, always an Elliott's going to present us with a plan?
The draft.
The draft plan for the wastewater plant.
Yes.
And oh, wow, that's great.
Yep, it is. It, it's not the plans, it's not like the engineer plans.
No.
But it's what we plan on doing.
The overall.
Yeah, feasibility and.
Like the general direction.
Yep.
Wow, that is awesome.
Yeah.
Great.
We have 10 potential bidders show up today for the pre-bid meeting for the two EWP projects. And the engineering has started on the third project, so path progress with the EWP. We have 12 properties that we've submitted applications for, for this new disaster, for the EWP program. 12 other residents that, their, their dwellings or their, their, I don't know what you mean. Their home, yeah, their homes are in peril of being washed into the brugs. So that's, we're going to keep going with that.
Are they all buyouts or something?
No, no, no.
Raising.
Some, well, some of them are buyouts, but some of them are just repairing.
Repair.
The, the bank, and armoring the bank. Mumley Engineering has completed the topo survey of the Hartle Farms, so that's, that, for the new box cover. And then this is lead service inventory announcement. Next week, always an Elliott and I think myself, maybe some other members of the town staff will be doing door-to-door lead service inventory visits. We're going to put it out on our website and Front Porch Forum and, because this needs to get done. So, they're going to be pounding the pavement.
I did mine finally.
Good, thank you.
So that's one.
Kristin and I are working on, through some of our public meetings that we've had and our interactions with the public, we're going to put together a timeline of projects and milestones that we want to reach for flood recovery and other projects, and we're going to make this available probably on the website. We're trying, just trying to figure out how to do it in a way that's not confusing and doesn't raise more questions. But really, it's just going to give our, it's going to give ourselves a timeline of recovery and where we want to be, when we want to be there.
So that sounds awesome, because I think a lot of people, probably even the select board, it's hard to keep track, there's so many projects.
Right.
And it'll be helpful just to, for all of us, for the public too, to know what projects we're tracking.
Yeah, yeah. And then the last thing, last week I had six dog bites as a deputy health officer. Some of those were preventable, some more.
Not you personally.
No, no. Yeah, reported dog bites.
Different dogs?
Different dogs. And I just wanted to point out that two out of the six of those dogs were licensed. So it's really important to get your dog licensed because it involves a lot less hassle for us and for the victim of a dog bite to know the status of the reading shots and all that kind of stuff. So, this public service announcer, just wanted to let you know.
That's true.
Yep.
And keep preventing dogs from biting people.
Yep. Alright.
Wow, that's a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, it's hard to understand. Alright, moving on, next we have the road foreman's report. We don't have the road foreman. Do you want to review anything?
Yep, they, we, last week they moved the crusher in. We're crushing different types of material, gravel, stay mat, some, some of the roundstone from the tailings of the sand, wear sand. So we have a bunch of different products coming out up there. They should be finishing up early next week. The guys have been hauling gravel on roads and grading roads and they're getting stuff buttoned up and getting their trucks prepared for winter.
I think, having recently been given the privilege of a little tour of our new gravel pit, I kind of think we ought to have a site visit as a board affair, just because it's pretty impressive what a resource it is for us.
Yep.
And I think we ought to have a look, and if we did it as a site visit, you know, as a warrant thing.
Yep.
If people from the public wanted to join, not that any people would, but if anybody gets interested, people could see what the town has in that pit.
Yeah.
I mean, it'd be a good thing.
Too bold.
Before it gets too old or after, when it's not urgent necessarily, what should we do?
Some, some of the select board members have been up there and some of them have put a lot of their sweat into helping the town out.
Yeah.
Which we appreciate.
Yeah.
We should move on to another subject.
Okay, that's fine, but I just think we should have a, have a tour sometime. Yeah, the, the, we are, so that's the road foreman's report.
Yep.
Sounds good. Next, Harvard Police Department.
Why isn't the road foreman here?
He had stuff going on tonight.
Harvard Police Department for Mr. Henry.
So, one of the things, we had body cameras, and they go back. We had these Vista 200 cameras and they're pretty simple, easy to use. We used WatchGuard Evidence Library to download all the videos. We kept that in-house, had everything right there. Well, as of July 2023, they decided they're not, no longer going to support that and they want everybody to go to web-based stuff, cloud service through them for all the storage. So, we had to make a change. And we got those cameras. I held off as long as I could, but we got a grant, got the cameras. If you remember back a while ago, we got those cameras and this is what we got. We got the VB 4mm camera, which looks nice, works somewhat well, but I've spent months with tech support on this. We've had issues with them. You know, won't turn on, do crazy things. We, you know, setting up the system took a long time to get it set up, the web-based system. It's a new system for them, for the company, and when I get tech support, they're like, "Well, I need to go talk to somebody else because I'm not sure, this doesn't make sense." That went on, so we're still working on that, but we do have these deployed out now, finally, after months of working with the company. So, we're having, still having issues. I threatened to send them back and try something different, but they keep trying to work with us, so. I just, I love you on passing around.
Do you store the data in-house with those?
No, so this is all cloud service storage. So the grant paid for five years of storage with this. We got everything.
Because hopefully you don't, you don't keep anything very long unless you do, right?
Yes.
Don't press the button.
Well, then don't give me, don't give me the toy.
Yeah, go ahead. Press all the buttons you want.
I did.
Yeah. So.
And these are body cams, by the way?
These are, these are body cams, yeah. So they got a little bit bigger, but. Next, Tim.
It's blinking green now.
Is it green?
Does it film me this?
Push the middle button, go ahead.
The big middle button.
The big middle button, that's how easy it works. There you go, now it's recording. Everything's there. So, yeah, everything is now cloud-based storage. They don't give us the option, because the other system was so nice to work with in-house. We had everything right there. Now you got to log on, go to a, you know, find your storage. We'll see how it goes, but. So, on another note, you know, we've been working on the drug activity in town with the Drug Task Force, and you know, last week we made a number of arrests. You know, two of those arrests resulted in state charges and federal charges. So we've been trying to up the ante with the federal charges as much as possible. So, it was a good week last week. The other people were just state charges, but felt like we made some headway last week with that. I did get some complaints with a traffic crash coming out of the post office. People turning left have a hard time with the trap, the parked vehicles that are parallel parked along the side in front of the salon there. Nobody really has any solutions, but one thing, I don't know if this would help or not, is one of those mirrors, if we could put one of those across the roadway, so you can, you know, round mirrors.
You're making faces.
Is it making faces? I, that's not property we own, that's the problem.
Right, right.
Some, some sort of suggestion? I'm looking for suggestions from anybody else, because the only other option is to eliminate those two parking spaces.
What if it was only a right turn? What if we?
And people just turned around and the?
Require people to turn right.
We could do that, yeah.
People are still going to turn left.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they're still going to turn left.
You're looking to make it more convenient for them to turn left, so if you make it no left turn, it's less, you know, than they, if it takes you too long, a long time, then it takes you a long time. It's an illegal turn, so, not my problem.
I don't, I don't think it's just that parallel parking cars. I think the sightlines there are really short.
I would.
Yeah, with the.
And with cross traffic.
Coming around the corner.
And you got two crosswalks, and then you got another crosswalk up to the right as well, up to, on the.
No left turn is the, is better for everyone.
You're right.
Oh, absolutely, because if you got people wanting to go left, you have to have traffic not coming both ways. So immediately that doubles the amount of time you wait, because you got twice, you got two directions. So people go out and you go right and you go up, it's no different than a rotary. Everybody goes the same direction, flow of traffic.
But turning left as a, I mean, I know.
So do you want to sit here for 15 minutes? Or do you want to get out in one minute and then have to do a two-minute loop? It'd be three minutes on your way.
So, in my experience, and I don't go get my mail all the time, but in my experience, when I'm coming out, if I want to go left, and there's traffic.
I'm not talking about that intersection. I'm talking about the flow of traffic and getting from point A to point B quicker. If it's, if you come out of the traffic and you have to have both traffic stop to get out, so you have to wait longer, you sit here longer. Or do you want to come right out real quick, take a right, go up, turn around and go right down? Why is this guy still sitting here?
So, what I was going to say is, in my experience, when I'm trying to come out of the post office, I'm trying to turn left, usually if there's traffic, very, very quickly, there's somebody coming along who wants to come into the post office, and since it's not wide enough for two cars to pass there, they stop and wait for me to leave. I see that all the time. I don't know.
That sounds like a way better answer.
Well, I don't know if it's an answer at all, I'm just saying, that's, I see, that's what happens. I don't know.
Right.
It's not great, because there's not room to get in and out of there. And yes, turning left is hard, but I don't know, we can make rules to prove that. Danny was right, that turning right and turning like.
Generally, when I come out of there, I make a right turn anyway, when it's busy.
Yeah, because then you can get out.
I can get out, I can just.
And you can go in the parking lot and.
Loop around.
We know that the owner of that property has expressed concern about the entrance to that parking lot, and we told her that we had a, we have a transportation alternatives grant.
Right.
For that, no street, so this is going to be looked at. And we can definitely have that conversation about putting no right, no left turn.
I have another idea.
Yep.
If the post office delivered mail.
They do.
To who?
To some, not all.
Then most, a lot of us wouldn't be going in and out of it.
It does make sense that the, that the, that, that whole thing is going to get looked at so closely that.
Yeah, and she, and the building owner had talked about moving the, the exit or entrance closer to the building, so it was further away from the corner, but that creates some safety problems in the parking lot.
Yeah, alright, so it's going to get looked at.
Yep.
Okay, just putting it out there, that's all.
But there was a crash.
There were, there's been several crashes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm surprised there aren't more.
Yeah.
No, this one just happened last week, or Saturday.
You talked about drug arrests. I was reading something recently suggesting that in the overall scheme, you know, it just doesn't seem like the drug problem is something that we can arrest our way out of. Like it seemed, you know, it helps, but it's a little bit of a lack of all type problem. And that, that, you know, ideally, you get fewer people that use drugs. I'm just wondering if there's any, like, if any of the people you encounter, do they get an option to get steered into treatment if they're ready for that?
All of them do. I mean, we have tons of treatment options, and that's the problem.
But they have to be ready, you can't force someone really to.
Right, the only way, the only way we're forcing people unfortunately is when they're arrested.
Yep.
They get dried out, okay? They, you know.
Yep.
It's a terrible process to go through, the withdrawals and everything else, but then they can start thinking clearly again, a little bit, and then maybe they want to get help at that point. That's more of an option than just saying, "Well, maybe you'll get help someday," you know?
Right, so they have it, yeah. So present them a, a way, a time for clear thinking and they have the option.
Right, right, so.
I don't know what else.
I've heard that expression a lot, but, I mean, Tim works in the field. You can speak on this, Tim.
I mean, you can't force people, you know, it's the same reason I don't work with court-appointed people is because you can't force people to, to do the work. They have to want to get better, they have to want to get clean and sober. And if they're not ready to do that, then it doesn't matter what you do or say. You can give them options, you can do all of that, but if they want to, they're going to, they're going to use, unfortunately. I mean, the, the answer I think is more complex and societal. You have to provide other avenues for meaning and process and fulfillment in life other than, you know, life's so hard that I'm going to turn to. Alright, any other questions, Chuck? Uh, moving along then, I have one select board review to approve first-class liquor license for front-seat coffee. So it's here.
What do you put in the coffee?
Irish coffee hat?
Clearly, you forgot a rule in a while.
Only a first-class license. But what's a mimosas?
I was about to make it approved last first time. Clearly, you forgot that rule already.
Well, we can't ask them to bring booze, right?
Yeah.
I don't have, I don't have the license yet.
Think I murdered us.
Albert is here to represent the post office. Howdy, good.
You guys are impossible to hear, it's terrible. The TV is terrible.
Hello, Albert. So we have a, we have a license request for front seat, first-class liquor license for front-seat coffee. It's a new application, right?
Yes.
And you have everything you need?
Yes, we received everything that we need from them, yes.
I would like to motion to provide a first-class liquor license for front-seat coffee.
Second. Any discussion?
So what's that, what are you going to be serving?
Beer and wine, is that what?
Beer and wine, mimosas, and this, we're, we're not really, we're not trying to be a bar. We're not, we're, we're kind of wanting to serve the, the lunchtime beer crowd and, and then have, we'll have some events that we want to have some beer and wine at, so.
Cool.
Not, not really competing with any of the other businesses in town. Just trying to sort of expand our, our offerings a little bit.
Great, competition's good.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Alright, all in favor of approving first-class liquor license for front-seat coffee, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, opposed, everyone's opposed. Motion carries, thank you, thanks for coming.
Yay, thanks.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
Next is item two, select board consider approving a manufacturer's Tier-3 cannabis license renewal for Tilla processing LLC.
It's a renewal? No, no issues with this.
No issues.
I can motion to approve a manufacturer's Tier-3 cannabis license for Tilla processing LLC.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Let how we move from a conversation about addiction to approving a liquor license of cannabis.
Anyway.
As long, as long as the state gets their money.
Yeah, there's no irony here, you know, it's just.
I'm glad you said that. There's an argument to be made here.
Yeah, definitely is, yeah. Uh, next is item three, select board to hear a presentation provided by a small business administration.
Thank goodness.
She's not here.
Thank goodness, same move here before, right?
I were ahead of time, just saying.
Yeah, we are.
And I'm anxious.
We, we did our best to try to.
Okay, we'll speed.
We'll speed up, get out of here.
Yep, I'm looking at. Alright, item four, follow-up discussion, so, oh, it just, there are SBA loans available. I see what you know that.
Yep.
If you're looking, then they have.
Call over.
Call, call the town manager's office if you're interested to develop, yeah.
That'd be good after you say that.
Alright.
What was that?
Call the town. Item four, follow-up discussion on LDRT connector loop recommendations, stuff named Street Bike Lane, discussed at the last meeting.
I just want to say that Danny was right on the cost.
Will you say that, will you say that one more? Will you say that one more time?
I don't take pivots.
Once is enough.
I'll tell him, I'll sing it if he wants.
It's recorded.
So, even one of these is pretty ridiculous, I think. Because a thousand, they're only talking, like, even the, a thousand feet isn't very much for just a white line.
Do you want to then give a rundown? Amanda's working on it, so she's got it.
So I've been working with LND Safety, and the white line with hash marks is $59, $100. And then the green paint one, they did the one where it's non-slippery for wintertime, and that is $45,710.
They didn't have an extra zero, they were by accident.
No.
I think we can go without figuring it out.
But even the white line is only 1,100 feet. That's, is that the whole, is that?
Is that the whole distance?
Yep.
That's the whole distance from where to where, though?
From the apartment building, just before you turn onto Jenny Road, to just before the United Church.
Front of Dale.
So, so the sidewalk.
Yeah, it's probably close, 1,100 feet, yeah.
The sidewalk goes all the way to United Church.
And that's, the picture's not very well. What does the, the hash marks represent? Do they represent a buffer zone? It does, it was one of the dimensions, like.
It would pull, it's, it's coming off the fog line, so it's.
So if you look at the other picture, they have the.
You want to show Dave?
The first one's with the green.
Yeah, so first of all, I don't think they did, I don't think they took the tape measures out.
He's getting black and white, I think.
Because they don't think, they don't have enough room to do either one.
You mean to do the green, the?
You were trying to save money.
There is, there is a quite a shoulder.
When we did the walk on, there was a fair amount of space there. I mean, that's why we suggested it, cause we did have the tape measure out when we did the walk on.
Alright, as long as there's. But do you see what I mean with just the white paint and the slash marks?
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
And if you look at the other picture?
Yeah.
It has the white paint and the slash marks, and the green is on the inside of it, so that's, that means the white paint and the slash marks are only this wide. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, so they're not covering the same area.
So they're not covering the same area.
Although it does say photo edition example on the four wing.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is the, is the slash marks, they, bu, in the first picture with the green paint, which that is a buffer zone.
Right.
Between the bike and the road.
Forty-five.
So what you're saying is if we went for the. If we went for the second option, it's black and white, you would wanna see basically slash marks, it's a full buffer zone, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, we're not going.
Like representing the width of a sidewalk.
Yeah.
Right.
Otherwise, it's just.
Isn't that what the green is?
Yeah, but what Danny's saying is, if you don't have the green, if you don't have the green, can it just be a full buffer?
Well.
You know what I'm saying?
So there's a difference, and with the green, the slash marks are the buffer, the green is the pedestrian.
Yeah.
Right, the walker.
Without, in the other picture, all there is is there's, all there is is a buffer.
Right.
And so.
We're missing a line.
Does that mean the walking portion is just on the other side of it?
Yes.
So what we're saying is, should the stripe be this long?
Over the walking section.
Yeah.
With the.
Because I thought that what we came to the conclusion that, the first thing we're gonna need to do is to make people understand that they can't park there, it's, it's a non. So we need, the first step is to make it no parking before we make it pedestrian friendly.
And this is a pedestrian.
You gotta educate them, get people to stop parking in it before you can tell people to walk through it.
I think a few signs might be cheaper.
So, I have another, I've been, once we got these pricing, the price of, I was kinda thinking of some other things, and you know those flexible bollards?
Yep.
They have?
Yep.
And I'm wondering if.
That might make a better barrier?
Delineating, it, it runs into a problem with plowing.
Yeah.
So, it, but it would delineate, it would create a walkway on the other side of that.
Right.
Yeah, but I don't, I just, it's narrow all the way through there, I mean, I drive big trucks out to go all the time.
And then, um, we have to follow, if we're gonna do it, we need to do it by the M U T D standard, but.
Right.
Like, we can't, we have to paint the lines into a standard.
Oh, really?
We can't just paint.
Is that because it's the highway?
No, that's for the, our insurance is now.
We also have a place, we don't ever match nothing.
I was gonna.
What's that?
We don't ever match nothing.
Cause we can't make a decision?
Um, we're getting closer, eighteen hours. I mean, that's, that's pretty expensive or something.
Wanna go into business?
I agree with Danny, like, if we're gonna go that route, let's, let's break the whole.
Right, cause at least then we're gonna start educating people that this is where, this is where people should be, this is not where vehicles should be. Couple of, no park, more, no parking signs, so then, people have a visual that you can walk there, because they're supposed to be carried, that just, it seems like, but I don't think that's what. So my question is, is that the price for a big stripe, or was it just a little buffer stripe?
They're fifty-nine hundred bucks, that's a, a low stripe.
Ah. Yeah, it doesn't say.
Which is, which doesn't.
They probably quoted it to the standard, to create a buffer. That's probably, that's, it's no parking, so.
Well, it's, 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 it is, it is, but it's.
But where we have no parking striped, like, in front of, um, Positopie?
Right.
That's whatever, ten feet wide.
That's the width of the parking space.
But if, but if we're, but if we're saying to the right of the fog line, as you drive south, is no parking, why not stripe the area?
We could, but I think it's gonna be more than fifty-nine hundred.
Okay, so let's get a price on that, let's get a price.
Yeah.
The width of the sidewalk, just the width is there.
Like a three foot.
Three or four foot.
I have two because.
Do what you do, the buffer and then?
No.
Or just do just.
Just do that.
Hash, diagonal hash marks.
Like the crosswalk is, yeah, the width of the crosswalk.
From the fog line to a new line on.
To a new line, even if it's just three feet, it's solid.
To a new line or just no line? So just hash marks, diagonal hash marks?
Well, wouldn't you have to have some sort of a buffer there? I mean, specifically for people walking, cause you don't wanna them walking next to.
Well, there's no buffer with the fog line.
Right, but you don't wanna them walking next to the, the fog line, I think that's why they put that buffer in there, so.
Yeah, I don't know.
We have to check the standards, the, the traffic standards.
I think people are walking there no matter what.
Who's gonna do that?
So, that's the issue, yeah.
They're not gonna offer up anything that's not, that's not.
So it's, it's very clear, it's coming from Jenny Road all the way to.
Over Cherry.
To where the sidewalks.
Cause that addresses my issue.
Okay, so seeing your quote for doing, uh.
Hash marks.
Yeah?
Diagonal hash.
If that's allowed.
If it's allowed.
And just to be clear, since we're already in October, this is really for next spring, or we try to get this done.
A solid answer would be good for next spring for me, I mean, it is getting.
So that way we can, when we do.
October, we're, we're the first week into October already.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
They won't, they won't hang after.
And then if we're doing that, like.
But it'd be great to have a solid plan come, drive before Memorial Day.
Yes.
First thing, see if David's won.
And I'd love to see, uh, an example of what budget line that was coming out of.
Yep.
So, that's my advice.
Yep.
And thank you, Amanda, for taking this.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, so, that's good, we're on.
I believe SBA is on the phone. They're.
Okay, um, wait, do we have, yeah, no, that's it, right?
Back to back.
No, no, but this is, uh, we're done with item four, do you have anything else on that?
No.
Okay, moving on. Uh, do we have someone from SBA on the line?
Oh, hey guys, this is Eric, I'm, uh, representing Tilla Processing, uh, renewal for a cannabis license.
Oh.
Processing.
Uh, done.
We got it.
It's approved. Approved.
Awesome, appreciate it guys, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Thanks for joining.
Yeah. There's nothing else we can do.
Select board reports, new business, old business?
Hey, somebody gonna be on that cannabis control board?
Oh, right.
Dave? I'd like to say I could be, but I probably can't be.
The training?
Uh, there's something in that inbox, yeah, somebody from select board.
Oh, from select board, you mean Kristen's?
No.
She's not from select board. I know, you think she's.
We know that.
Yeah, no, we, select board needs to start taking some of our own responsibilities there, we're gonna be bad shape.
I, I don't want to, well, personally, I don't have a lot of interest in going up against the state on the cannabis control thing.
So what are you asking, Dan?
Participation from the select board members in running the town of Hydrick?
I think that's, okay, thank you, but I guess I don't know about some particular.
Up to, you didn't get an email in the inbox?
The state sent us a survey about the cannabis control, permission out in there.
Right, because eleven hours, something, it's gonna, I think, it's no big deal, it's not?
Well, so, so historically, the issue that we had, you know, maybe, but, but is that when we get a request for a cannabis license, the only reason we could ever possibly turn one down would be if, uh, for some reason it didn't pass our zoning regulations, in which case Kristen would have already sent a backing. So basically, we just have to pass everything that comes.
But we are the cannabis control board, like a problem.
And, so, I guess a couple things, like, why we thought we were setting this up to have some sort of input, but we don't actually have any, but we also don't get any.
That could change based on the.
If you went to a meeting, huh?
Yep.
That's what I was thinking.
Well, the survey, right. And we also don't get any of the revenue, if the state gets a lot of revenue from this.
Also something that should be brought up in the survey, it sounds like, I mean, good luck getting money from the state.
Yeah.
It's, uh, they want their revenue. Well, we did stand, we do get money from the state, we get quite a bit of money from the state. I know, I know we do, but I'm talking about in this regard.
Tax revenue.
Didn't they also say that they're not gonna approve many more, um?
They halted retail.
All good conversations, there'll probably be discussed.
Um, and then, we do have the option of getting their rev, revenue, one percent, the local option tax.
I can do the local option tax, but it has to be in all business.
Yep.
We can't, they can't be special.
Right.
No.
And the tax department has made it easier for towns to do that.
It's true, that's something to discuss, you should know, it's, for.
So Danny, you don't wanna do the.
Can't be specific, or it has to be all business?
So, as of tonight, I've been in my duck truck seat fifty-one hours already this week, and I've got.
And it's only Thursday.
And it's only Thursday, and I've got tomorrow, Saturday to go, so, I'm pretty busy right now.
Yeah, okay.
But I thought it would be something that the select board would be more interested in, because we do have, we have voiced concerns about how the whole thing is being run, and that since this is the beginning of a new deal for everybody, that's why they're having these meetings, is to get together and figure out what we're doing wrong, and maybe possibly we might be able to do something right for a change, which, I agree, is highly unlikely dealing with the state of the law. That's, that was my thinking.
Yeah.
And I'll do my best to be on it, maybe I will be, uh, you know?
Yeah.
I'm sick tonight, I need to get me a tablet or something for my traffic, and I can.
Multitask, right?
Phone, attend a meeting while this isn't big enough, driving truck.
That's on the safe.
Gotta do what you gotta do.
So I don't know that.
I mean, then people sit at their desks all day long, don't have time to do it.
Don't sit at the desk, don't.
Oh, I don't care, I just brought it up, cause I wanna make sure I wasn't the only one getting the email.
No, you're.
No.
Done my job.
You maybe didn't.
Yeah, I didn't think I saw that, that's why I was confused.
So I will forward to you, so you can always do the survey.
Yeah, it's a survey, it was.
Um, and then.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see.
And I put, I actually filled the survey out telling them what I thought, too, so.
Yep.
If everyone that fills it out knows that, maybe they'll get the idea that.
Right, and we're frustrated.
Honestly, I don't believe I ever heard anyone say that they had it, I'll figure it out, I'll first go.
Oh.
No, the state didn't even say that.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I don't, you don't happen to remember when the webinar, I mean, it's.
I was eighty-eight. I just looked at it today, again.
Here, would you please send that to me?
I will.
Potentially. Okay.
Well, it'd be nice just for rates, it'd be great if the town actually had something, if, yeah, and that, that we could actually say that we could do something.
Yeah.
That was kinda like my, my thought.
The municipal roundtable will be on Tuesday, October eighth at eleven AM, this is a virtual event, we are partnering with the Montego City and Towns.
How long is it?
I'll forward this email to you right now, Tim.
Thanks.
Probably no more than an hour, but maybe longer, so.
Okay.
The board wants to hear the new, the cannabis control.
Who'd ever thought?
Yeah. Alright, any other new business, old business, or the first?
Um, I just wanted to mention that it's gonna be a big day in Hardwick on Saturday, there are, um, a bunch of different events happening. Uh, there's the Fall Full Age Craft Fair at the elementary school from nine to three, there's the Hogs Garment Swap, I think it's at Hesam, I'm assuming? Ten to three, there's also, um, Kiwanis yard sale, remages, there's hot dogs and veggie burgers, are those happening?
Downtown, no, it's in the Hydelower.
Hydelower, yeah.
Downtown, there will be, uh, there will be lunch, and then the CAE is celebrating twenty years, which is just remarkable, um, at two, from two to five thirty. Um, and there are much other open houses, so.
And Sunday's the pumpkin walk.
And Sunday's the pumpkin walk at six.
I was just gonna say, I was looking for that, Sunday's the pumpkin walk.
This, this one, this ad just says this Saturday, which is why the pumpkin walk's out of there, it's out there.
You have a question?
Yes.
That incubator building is how many million?
Many million.
Why does it still, this is where my brain works, why do they still have plywood on that door and window?
Oh, so for some reason, the door windows are backwatered.
It's funny, though, that whole, they're this whole project, that door was like the first door they put on, and that plywood in the window, and it's still to this day, they're almost finished.
The ones in the back, too.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Grass is growing, and trees are growing, and everything's nice, and.
Yep.
Wow, that's, that's gotta be a story by my back.
Yeah, you can't have everything.
Well, it's just the way the world is.
So for some reason.
Backwatered.
For some reason, those, those, the glass for those is backward or slow or something, and the other thing is some office lights apparently are potentially stuck in some.
So this is a Longshoreman break to take the netto speed things up, right for Christmas.
Five billion dollars a day, that's right.
So I gotta tell ya, if I thought these guys were making a decent wage already, I'd feel bad for them, but I don't believe Longshoreman, Union Longshoremen are be taking advantage of you.
They're able to get our attention.
They sure are, whatever they're getting, they're gonna get more.
Alright, any other reports, new business, old business?
Any update on the kiosk, the guy that was gonna do the estimate, the contractor?
Uh, Tracy's working on that, I don't know if she's having any.
She needs to try, he said.
The trailhead kiosk.
If you have an update.
He says he needs more information from her on something, she's old, that's what he said.